We'll call to order the Louisville Town Council meeting for October of 2015. We welcome all in attendance tonight, and thank you for coming. As is our custom, we call the roll of our participants tonight by introducing each of the council members. To my immediate right is Ms. Sandermack, who is our mayor pro tem, followed by Mr. Jeff Zinger, who is at the far right. Mr. Ed Smith is unable to be with us tonight. To my left is Councilman Robert Green, followed by Councilman Mike Horn, and Dr. Ken Sadler is absent also from tonight's meeting. Members of our staff that we have with us is led by our town manager, Hank Perkins, sometimes known as Monty. Our town attorney, Mr. Bowe Howf. Our town clerk, Ms. Joyce Walker, sometimes known as "Who Is Doing This?" Our assistant town manager and our finance director, Kathy Bruce. Thank you, Kathy. Your nameplate's right. Other staff members we have is Marty Myers, our town planner. Ms. Lynn Hall is on the camera. She is our events coordinator and our public information officer. And then we have members of the press that are with us tonight. Ms. Lisa O'Donnell and Ms. Elizabeth Cruz. We thank you for being with us also at this time. I think, let's see, next is to adopt our agenda for tonight. I think there was last published or sent out by email. I think it remains the same, does it not? So if you need a moment to look over the agenda, please do so. If not, I'll entertain a motion for adoption.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign. Okay. We do have an agenda for tonight's meeting. We'll start with the consent agenda. We'll ask our manager to lead us through the items on the consent agenda.
This evening's consent agenda consists of four items. First is Resolution 2015-062 for the acceptance and approval of monthly financials for August 2015. Next is the approval of council briefing and action minutes from September 3, 2015. The approval of council meeting minutes from September 10, 2015. And lastly, the approval of council special meeting minutes from September 30, 2015.
Okay. Any questions of the manager on any of the items that make up the consent agenda? What's the pleasure of council?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
No further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign. Okay. Consent agenda passes. Next item is, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay. The next section is introductions, presentations, and proclamations. In this evening, there are none. Moves us on to public forum.
Okay. Public, this item on our agenda, this is the first of two opportunities that we have in all of our council meetings for the public to address council on any subject matter that it may be interested in. It could be something that's on tonight's agenda, although we do have a public hearing later on, that there'll be opportunity there to address council also, or speak at the public hearing. But if you have something on your mind, those of you in the audience that would like to speak, we ask that you come forward. I do have some that have signed up for this first public forum. But we ask that you come forward to the microphone or to the podium here with the microphone, that you state your name and your address, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. This is a time that we hear from you. We encourage your input, and we do not get into debate or answer even questions unless it's something that's very obvious. But at this point in time, we have Terry McInnes. Terry?
Good evening. I'm new at this. Never done this. Three minutes is going to really cut me short, but I'll do what I can.
You've been here.
Thank you. Okay. I would like to address the issue, I think it might have been the last one, about urban chicken raising.
You might give us your address.
I'm sorry. 1105 Grinnell Court.
Okay. Thank you.
And I want to bring up the urban chicken raising. I think that might have been something that came up the last time. And I have some views about this because my neighbor has chickens, and we live in that Sequoia development. If any of you know, the houses are very close together. And they got the chickens, they have three chickens, and they actually have a rooster. Chickens, not too bad of a situation. I think that needs to be on a bigger area, because some of these lots are like a half acre. But the rooster is the biggest problem. I feel like roosters should not be allowed in a development. If you have a huge acre of land, you want to have chickens and a rooster, that's fine. But when you have a rooster that's no more than 50 feet away from your bedroom, and it wants to crow at 5:30 in the morning, and I don't get up at 5:30, it's a problem. The other problem is, this rooster flies. So do the chickens. The rooster has flown into my backyard, and I have pictures, and I actually had Mr. Perkins and Ms. Myers come out to look at the situation. They have the pictures on their iPad. That the rooster was just walking around in my backyard like he owned it. And I've tried to get him out, but you really can't, when you try to chase a rooster, is all you know, it runs. It's going to run fast. And I have a little dog, a little 12-pound dog, and the dog has cancer. And the rooster was in my yard, and I didn't see it. I let my dog out of my own backyard, and it jumped my dog. Luckily, she was able to get out from underneath it. And the chicken coop they have is a makeshift coop. It's about 25 feet from my property line. They have a fenced-in yard. It is their fence. But as I said, the rooster flies, and he can fly out. He's coming to the front yard. He's running around the front yard. When they clean the chicken coop, or whatever, they walk over to the edge of their property right beside of mine and dump the chicken poop. The smell is starting to come. It's coming forward. We can't even enjoy to go out on our deck to have dinner or whatever because of the smell. And like I say, these houses are pretty close. It's an urban, you know, a suburb. And therefore, when you want to put chickens in that, I have done some research where they have, a lot of states and cities have you at least 500 feet in any direction if you butt up to somebody's property. I don't have a problem with, you know, people out in bigger lands, have two or three acres of land, they want to have urban chicken raising. It's a thing this day and age. But I think it needs to be addressed, and some type of ordinance needs to be set up where it protects the people, like me, taxpayer, that I don't have to worry about this chicken coming in my yard, you know, pooping in my yard, attacking my dog. And also, it was brought up to Mr. Myers and Mr. Perkins, is, one night I was up late letting my dog out, and a red fox jumped the fence to theirs. He's got wind of the chickens in there. I've not seen him since, but I haven't been out at 2 o'clock in the morning. And as we know, in the wintertime, coyotes, everything foraging for food gets very scarce. They're going to start getting wind of this chicken, these chickens in there. They run free in their backyard all day long. They will leave the house, and the chickens are just free to roam. They get out, they jump back in, and it's just a complete nuisance. And I've tried not to, you know, cause any problems, because chickens don't really bother me. The rooster has got to go, though. I mean, he's got to go. And when we have daylight saving time, it's getting ready to kick in. At 5:30 in the morning, it's going to be light, and he bellows out all day long. And I like to sleep in on the weekend. Not going to do that. Number two, you have the wind blowing. Some of you may like to open your windows in this nice, cool breeze, fresh air. I can't do that anymore. My windows stay shut because of the smell, and also because of the crowing. I've had to get a fan to run in my bedroom just to sleep in the morning, so I don't hear him. Because he will get up on their deck, which is about 50 feet away from my bedroom, and just cock-a-doodle-doo his heart out. And another thing with having the urban chickens in a development as such as Sequoia, Arbor Run, or whatever, I know my property value has gone down. I mean, common sense will tell you, if you're looking for a home, and you have a small family, and you come out to my house, nice-looking house, great backyard, huge for kids, but you go down and you start to go down to my storage shed, and you look over, and there's a rooster standing up there crowing. I wouldn't buy the house. I sure would not get one. If I want to be beside roosters, I would go out to the beautiful lands of Louisville and the farmland that we have, and I would live beside somebody. And when we moved out here, I've been here 25 years in that development, and I've been there a lot longer than the people that live beside of us. So it's just something I think that the council needs to address, to reopen, to try to come up with some type of ordinance. I'm not real good on, you know, acreage and things like that, of how many feet, but when I've read 300 feet, 500 feet, you know, something to work with. If you want to have chickens, I could learn to live with that. If an ordinance was put up, you know, where it was kept up, the smell was kept down, they were contained more. But there's no exception on the rooster. A rooster in an urban area, in a suburb, absolutely not. And I just, you know, I just feel like there's something that should be done, and we could, you know, come to some type of rules and regulations, and then the people that want to do it, fine. But you've got to work with each other, and it's just, things that have happened to me as a taxpayer, I feel like I'm being penalized with the chicken, I mean, the roosters right up against me. And just for forethought, my vet told me that if this chicken jumps, this little dog of mine has cancer, if it scratches it, we'll have to put her down. There's no ifs, ands about it, because chickens walking around in the poop in their yard, scratch a dog, in an immune-suppressed situation, it's going to kill her.
Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. McInnes.
Thank you very much.
For information, we will be addressing the update on that particular issue later in tonight's session. So next, we have Ms. Mary Kay Brown.
I'd like to wait till the comprehensive plan is finished.
Oh, okay. How about Ms. Susan Linker? Same for you, Ms. Linker? Okay. Very good. Anyone else would like to address council at this time from the public forum?
There's more for the public than it is for council, who's aware that there's an election coming up on November 3, and this will be the last council meeting prior to that. And of course, everyone's encouraged to vote, and in order to inform you better about your vote, the Louisville Civic Club, as it has every year for, every election for the past many elections, is sponsoring a candidate's forum, which will take place graciously at the library from 6:30 till 8:30 on October 22. Cordially invited to come out and make your voices known, to ask questions of the candidates, and we invite you to come in and attend. Thank you.
We did need your name and address for the record.
Bowe Howf, 441 Roller Mill Drive, here in Louisville.
Thank you, Bowe.
Sorry.
Anyone else at this time? We do have forums at the back that you can submit written comments if you'd like to use that method. Having no other speakers, we will close the first public forum and go on to item number five, new business.
For item number five, this is a great wagon road contract. Last week at our work session, I indicated my desire with to have the contract for the GWR survey and design here tonight for council's consideration for adoption. The contract, as far as going over and proofing and working it out with the contractor, has proven to take longer than anticipated. So if I could ask for some leeway for council, that we may consider to have a special call meeting maybe of somewhere around Thursday of next week, I think I could hope to have everything wrapped up for council's consideration of the contract at that time. But it will not be available this evening.
All right. We'll have to just poll council and find out availability, and we'll do that, I guess, separate from tonight's meeting. Is that all right with you, Ms. Walker? You're usually the one that gets that thing together. All right. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
All right.
The next section is public hearings. We have one public hearing scheduled for this evening's meeting. It is the public hearing to receive comments on updating the 2015 comprehensive plan. And then we will start with staff presentation.
Before we start that, Marty, come ahead, Marty. I failed to mention earlier, I did mention that Ms. Hall was on the camera, but tonight's meeting, like always, is being recorded for playback on Cable Channel 6, so we welcome all who may be viewing by that and participating with that method. And you'll be able to see it next week. All right, Marty? Okay. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. First and foremost, I'd like to thank this council for its continued support of the comprehensive plan update project. When we asked some time ago, can we pursue having a consultant help us with the facilitation of the public input sessions, you agreed. And having Paul Crone and Liz Jurgen of the Piedmont Triad Regional Council assist us with the conduct of those meetings was absolutely invaluable to us and made for a much better product, I feel sure, given the information that we gleaned from those processes that they took us through. I'd also be remiss if I didn't thank the other staff that were working on this with us at the PTRC. Melinda Ford and others in the data processing center provided the environmental scan or the demographic update portion of the document that we first inserted back in 2010, and we have updated it for this current version of the comp plan. It was well-received in 2010, and it's being equally as well-received in 2015. I'd also like to thank my truly outstanding planning board chairman, Jean Marie Foster, whose leadership and vision steered this project from day one. And to the ever faithful and hard-working members of the planning board, it was always a pleasure attending their meetings on the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month. Their commitment and dedication to the project was fundamental in the making of this inclusive document that we present for your consideration this evening. I also need to thank Ms. Walker and Bowe Howf, whose attention to the detail, both large and small, as it relates to the grammatical items found within the document, were absolutely important in making sure that the document had a current, what was it, the tense that we tried so desperately to get right. We did so in 2010, and the tenses were also equally as important this time around, making sure that each paragraph related properly to the next paragraph, and that each chapter properly related to the next. That can be awfully cumbersome when you're taking on a project of this magnitude. Once again, your help and assistance was greatly appreciated by both myself and the planning board. Last and definitely not least, I'd like to thank the citizens of Louisville. They dutifully completed their surveys, as well as attended many of our public input sessions that we had right here in this chamber. I believe that the document would not be complete without their thoughts, suggestions, and comments. I know that the document that we've provided you this evening is an accurate reflection of the vision that they have for their town. You will note that many of the themes and conclusions that we have found and made part of this updated document are very similar to those found in previous updates of the document. It is my hope and the hope of the planning board that this comprehensive plan will continue to be an essential resource for the current and future councils to guide growth and protect those qualities that have made Louisville such a special place to live and work. At this time, I'll attempt to answer any questions that you might have, or specifics related to things that were done with the updating of this document, if you have any.
Council members, do you have anything for Marty at this time? Just want to make sure that, well, inform the public, too, that we had a special meeting of council to review and go over the document very thoroughly. And there were a few minor changes made from council's perspective. Are those changes now within the document that's on our website and the hard copies that are ready for?
They are. And we've also provided a listing of those to members of the planning board, because not all of them were able to attend that session with you folks, so now they are understanding and aware of what you folks came up with.
Okay. I understand, too, we've got a copy of the document at the library and available here at Town Hall as well. Okay.
We're in the process. If you so choose to approve tonight, then Marty and I will be getting with the folks at PTRC to remove the pagination that they've placed in the document and the things that we know we have to do with it to get it up online and get it actually done through American Legal. So we'll be working on that once you all approve the document.
That, and we've also got a thought to put a couple more pictures in there. We have a thought to put a new picture of the roundabout that's been completed, as well as the bridge. Those are two projects that have been kind of ongoing, and the weather hasn't cooperated most recently with us going out and being able to take a suitable photograph for the book. So there'll be a few things like that that'll be added. But for the most part, other than the pagination and just a few pictures, it's ready.
Okay. All right. Very good. Anything else from Mr. Myers at this point? All right. Thank you, Marty.
Thank you.
We may be calling on you later. Well, we do have advertised and have on schedule a public hearing on the 2015 comprehensive plan. So at this point, we will open the public hearing to members of the public to address council concerning items within the document, or the document as a whole. Do have two that have signed up to speak. Ms. Mary Kay Brown.
Mary Kay Brown, the president of the Louisville Historical Society, 7335 Bullard Road, Clemmons, North Carolina. And I would want to thank all of you for the great support you've given the Historical Society and our preservation, and our marker program, and also the Nissen House preservation. It's really great, great support. But we also, the Historical Society requests that the council follow up on Councilman Horn's suggestion of developing a permanent fund that will help to protect the important historic sites in Louisville in order to preserve our town's unique character. We would like to see this in the town's comprehensive plan in addition to what you have in the character section. Thank you.
Ms. Susan Linker?
I live at 814 Reynolds Road. I'm the co-chair of the steering committee for the Nissen House project. I'd like to say, first of all, thank you very much for including the photo that you did of the Nissen House project in this draft. What I'm hoping is that if it's not too late to add to it, we have an updated photo, a much better-looking photo for you, if you would be willing to include this, since we're still at the draft stage, as I understand it. And I brought you a copy of it tonight, and I'll leave it with whoever needs to have a copy of it. I'll leave it with Joyce. But we really appreciate everything you've done. It couldn't have happened without you. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Linker. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address council concerning any aspect of the comprehensive plan? All right. If there's no other speakers, we will close the public hearing and go to council discussion. I think apparently there's opportunity to put the updated photograph in the plan, so we got that in time. So thank you very much. As to the request for the specific funding, anyone want to speak to that?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that the, you know, one of the things that we try to do is a council, and we obviously have a very limited budget, and we have set up a number of capital reserves over the years to fund projects that we not only see now as priorities, but hopefully we'll see in the future and have a little bit of a savings account established for them. And I think when our next budget session come up, the appropriate time at that point is to begin to talk about a capital reserve for historic projects. And I think that that's when we allocate monies for our capital reserves, and we discuss which are still appropriate and which we need to expand or reduce, and that's the time that that'll probably be introduced.
I think that's appropriate timing and appropriate point in the budget cycle to address that. Anyone else have any comments?
My only comment would be to the planning board, well done. I mean, it was great. We got the briefing the other day, and it was, I felt like it was fantastic. It was thorough. It was really captured, but, you know, kind of continue what we have done in Louisville. It captured, you know, kind of our vision, enhanced it, tweaked it. And so after serving on the planning board, I know how much work that is, and so we really appreciate your time and your effort in that.
Any other comments?
Oh, I kudos that. It was a very well-put-together document.
Well, I think, hopefully, that the planning board realizes the appreciation, not just the council, but of the town as a whole, as to the time and effort that was put into this document. For those of you that maybe are not that aware of it, it is a tremendous amount of work that goes into these reviews every five years. And it is certainly a document that's, we like to refer to it as a live document, in that we abide by it, and we judge new development, expansion of services, things of that nature, by what's in the comprehensive plan. And so it's not something that's just put on the shelf and collects dust. It is really taken to heart, and it's, I don't know of any other town, to tell you the truth, that has the mechanism and the process that we have in updating and adhering to the comprehensive plan. So again, echoing others, our appreciation to the planning board and all the work and effort that you put into this. With that, I would make a motion that we consider or approve Resolution 2015-063, which is the updated 2015 comprehensive plan. Do you have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the like sign. Okay. Does pass unanimously. And I know I've already been contacted by the PTRC as to, will they be getting a copy of this? Okay. Good. All right. We'll go to the next item on our agenda.
Okay. The next section of the agenda is for unfinished business. This is sort of an update on the meeting that we had September 10, 2015. It was our last public meeting. At that time, we had the consideration of a couple of ordinances, one of which was deferred for consideration that evening for an unspecified date. Last week, at our council briefing, council chose to give no consideration unanimously to the ordinance that we had a public hearing on that was presented and had a public hearing last month on. So that is specifically to the ordinance as it was presented at public hearing last month.
Yeah. We further amplify on that, especially for one of the previous speakers, that there's a mechanism already in place, and maybe our attorney can elaborate on that. But we think that with our noise ordinance, I guess our ordinance is for, I don't know if we have a trespassing ordinance specific, but it's included in some of the other ordinances, I think, as well as odor. ordinances, I think, as well as odor and, and right along with uncapped lots and things of that nature. So you want to, for the benefit of the public, kind of explain?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I guess there are a few options available to people who have concerns about either of these two situations. With regard to the chickens and roosters that are out there, certainly animal control is one potential avenue for seeking relief in the event that the animals are causing trouble of any kind, whether it be noise coming onto your property or any of those kinds of things. I think as council mentioned last week, various members of council mentioned that certainly the first option is to have a face-to-face discussion with the neighbor and see whether things can be resolved. Sometimes neighbors aren't aware of what potential impacts they may be having. So that's, those are a couple of the avenues that are available. With regard to the noise ordinance, Louisville has adopted the Forsyth County noise ordinance, which has a provision in it concerning animals that are causing excessive noise, and that can be raised. Again, first perhaps through discussions with the, with the neighbor or the landowner involved, and if that fails to, to resolve the issue, then certainly Sheriff's Department can be contacted, animal control can be contacted, and there are civil remedies available. So all of those things, I think, you know, put together are in place even without any action having been taken by, by council. They have been in place, they are in place, and, and remain in place for, for your use if, if you deem, deem that appropriate. So those are out there. In addition to that, I'd be happy to, you know, personally, you know, to field calls. I regret that I'm saying it, but I'll say it anyway. I'd be happy to receive those calls and direct folks to the appropriate, to the appropriate agency that might help. But animal control, at least with regard to the chickens, is, is the first line following a, you know, an attempt to work it out with your neighbor.
I think also we have instructions here at Town Hall that people can, can follow as far as contact numbers and?
I'm, I'm sure that we have made available or in the process of making available that those, that information from animal control, but that certainly is something that can be looked up online. I think we are going to make those, that number available on the website as well? Has already been done. So that's available there if you need to make use of that, that information's available. With regard to, and I know it wasn't specifically discussed in the public forum time, but certainly with regard to bees and those who may be interested both in dealing with potential concerns that there may be with regard to bees, but also those who may be interested in taking that up as a hobby or an avocation or even, you know, a way of even, perhaps even making money, that there are, there is a state, North Carolina Beekeepers Association, and there are people associated with that. Joyce, is that information also available on the website as well, bees?
There, there's also, there's also a local one.
And there is a local one, and those, that, that information should be?
Agricultural Extension Agent, agricultural extension agency would probably be helpful, and I did, and thank you, Jeff, I didn't mention them with regard to chickens. Chickens also.
Because that can be something, could be what, looked at, additional information, possible mechanisms for how best to construct and locate a chicken coop, dealing with fecal matter, I think there was reference there, and how to deal with that. I don't know if there is a de-laryngification of roosters possible, but that might be something you'd be looking at, and then the bees are certain.
I think the foxes will take care of that.
And, yeah, your problem may be resolved before you, before you know.
And I will say, the agricultural extension agent here in Forsyth County, April Bowman is down there, she's fantastic. And so it's a great, we, we're really fortunate with the folks we have here with the extension agent. They're just located down by the airport. Our airport.
So to clarify, a rooster crowing, that, that's basically comes within the noise ordinance.
That would fall, what, what is required is some continuity to it, not based upon what we heard tonight with Ms. McInnes's concern. If that is a continuous situation, then that is something that would be covered by noise, Forsyth County's noise ordinance enforced if necessary by Sheriff's Department.
Very good. Any other comments from council concerning?
If you folks will, will make sure that Ms. Walker has either your address or your email address before you leave tonight, she will email you both of those provisions in the county ordinances that we've identified, so that she'll have something to work from and know exactly what those ordinance say, and gives you the remedy for at least addressing, I know certainly for one of them.
We have the address as well as telephone number and even an email address. I'll make sure that Ms., that I don't take these off. Ms. Walker will have access to that. Okay. Anything else on number seven? All right, we'll go to administrative reports.
The first under administrative reports are the upcoming events at Shallowford Square and Town Holidays. On Friday, October 9th, we have movie night, I believe that's Hotel Transylvania. And believe it or not, there's more rain in the forecast.
I'm sure of it.
On Saturday, the 17th, there will be the, the annual Shalloween event. It's an event intended for small children, it's at Shallowford Square. And then on the 24th, which is also a Saturday, we have the Shalloween Rain Date. If we can't do it on the 17th, the makeup day is the 24th. And then that brings us to the, I think I'll stop at November 11th, where we will be observing Veterans Day that day. Town offices will be closed.
Very good. Any question of the manager on any of the events sponsored by the town? All right, next item.
The next item under administrative reports are the approvals at the briefing and action meeting that was last week on September 3rd. First, we had the issue involving Rainbow Avenue. We had the adoption of Resolution 2015-061. This was a resolution of intent to consider the closing of a portion of Rainbow Avenue. And then secondly, we had the consideration approval of Ordinance 2015-079, amending Budget Ordinance 2015-045, in an amount of $475 to contract land surveying for map preparation and legal description for the closure of a portion of Rainbow Avenue. And for the, for the good of the people that are in the room that didn't have the benefit of being at the meeting last week, that is a situation in which Rainbow Avenue is broken in the middle, and it was never finished, and it represents sort of a safety and, a safety issue for emergency response services. By having a broken section in the middle with no way to get from one side to the other, it does potentially have the, I guess, the prospect of slowing down emergency response in the event that they had to be called to Rainbow Avenue. So Joyce Walker with Bo Howf has been working to work with the residents there. They have come up with and agreed upon renaming of a portion of the street. This is a process, it's more of a formal process to go, that we go through in order to close a portion of Rainbow Avenue as it exists today in the middle, so that we remove any type of future potential for confusion from emergency response.
Okay. Thank you very much. That brings us for the good of the order.
Yes, sir, that's for the good of the order, and this is second of our two public comment periods.
This is the second opportunity for citizens or those that are in the audience to address council. It's same, same rules as before. We ask that you come forward, state your name and your address. Leave your comments to three minutes, and that we're here to listen to you, not to get into discussion or debate. So is there anyone at this time that would like to address council? Okay. And as before, there are forums available for written comments there at the rear of the, of the chambers. So we'll close the public comments and go to council comments for tonight's meeting. Anything from anyone? We did promise a short meeting tonight, so I know our staff and, and members of the press probably appreciate that. And so it was a short agenda, but it had a lot of significance to it, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to recognize Ms. Darielle Hooser, who has been back to one of our town council meetings after being away for a while. It's very good to see familiar faces, particularly from individuals who've had so much to do and their families have been so much, so instrumental in the, in the growth and history of Louisville.
Well said. Hope you will come to, to many more. Very good. Okay, if there's no other comments, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you for being here. (applause)[1790.22]